We are calling to order this working session of the Nelson County Board of Education. It is Thursday, January 4th, 2018. And, let's see, so the first thing, which is going to change the agenda, so the first thing is our organization of the board. So each January, the Nelson County Board of Education elects a new chairperson and vice chairperson for the calendar year. These offices traditionally rotate among the board members to avoid placing an undue burden, and it's not a burden, on any one member. At this time, we would like to accept nominations for these positions, and I would like to nominate Mr. Damon Jackie to the position of chairperson. Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion?
I guess I'm not supposed to vote, too. You can all vote.
Vote for yourself. You can vote for yourself. People do for free. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. So, alright, so with that, Mr. Jackie, I'm going to turn the, over to you, and it's yours.
Okay, so then, the next order of business, 3B, is the election of a vice chairperson. So we would need a motion, a nomination and a motion for a vice chairperson for this calendar year.
Motion.
To nominate that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we got a motion for Ms. Berry for vice chairperson by Ms. Breeding.
I will second that.
Second by Ms. Dye. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. So going on into item four, then, Efficient Resource Management. 4A is the draft budget for the fiscal year 2018-2019, which starts July 1st of 18, and that would be Mr. Hawkinsmith.
Good evening. We've got two things on the agenda for me tonight, this, following this, the staffing formula. I think it probably makes more sense to just lump the two together. We're not taking action tonight, and they're really related. Ms. Brown, Ms. Williams, Ms. Clark and I have been meeting with principals for the last few days, giving them a preview of what their March 1 allocations will look like if, you know, just remind you, in March every year, we provide schools a staffing allocation based on the staffing formula times the enrollment estimates that you all, that we provide them. So we've done some preliminary work with that, done some preliminary work with those enrollment estimates, and we know that, and you've heard me say, I think multiple times now, that enrollment in the district this year is down pretty substantially. Of course, that's going to have an impact on schools as we staff schools next year. I'm not a big fan of surprises, maybe on my birthday, but when it comes to my budget, I don't like them. And I don't, I'm sure principals don't. So our goal has been to meet with them now, a couple of months in advance of the formal allocation being given to them, so they can process, meet with their staff, and plan for what things look like they're going to be in a month or so. Because then they can monitor their own enrollment numbers, and this happens every year. I'll be in touch with my regular basis as to latest enrollment counts and how that impacts their budget and staffing allocations and so forth. Having said that, I'll skip to the staffing formula. Our goal is on the 16th of January to recommend a staffing formula that's unchanged. And I think that, that's our goal, and that doesn't mean schools won't, will have the same staff. It means they'd have the same staff if they had the same amount of students. And so where our schools are going to see some changes is in staff based on actual enrollments. Now, I will say that the legislative session began Tuesday, and our staffing formula that we'll be presenting on the night of 16th, and again, we're projecting it's going to be unchanged, we hope, it's what we're planning for now. If the legislature takes action that drastically affects us or affects us adversely, there's been some talk of a reduction in the SEEK base, not a lot. I'm hoping that doesn't happen. I'd be surprised if it did, but if it does, then we have to drop back and punt and do something a little different. We're going to hope that doesn't happen. So again, the plan for our staffing formula, bring it to you here in a couple of weeks, is it'll look just like it did last year. What's changed is the enrollment numbers. Now, if we can focus on the draft budget, that's the initial budget we approve in the district each year. This budget is for the time period that begins July 1st, of course. It's the first in a series of three budgets. We'll approve another one in May, the tentative budget, that's a little bit more in-depth, and then we approve a final working budget in the month of September. And we have a little more information, obviously, in May. The legislative session will be final in May, should be. We should have a lot more information to go on then, and then by the time we can bring you a working budget in September, we will know who's employed, for the most part, 95% of them, and we have a really good idea at that point. Now, what I wanted to share with you tonight is my main concern with district, the district's budget, projections, and our future. And what you have there is a roughly a 20, a little over a 20-year history of average daily attendance in our school district. Starts in 1997, and I can't quite see it, but I believe in 1997, it's 4,142.9. And you'll see a few uptick, a drop-down, it goes back up, and then you see in the early 2000s, pretty steady increases on an annual basis. And if you look back in board minutes, you may recall, if you're a taxpayer, back in the early 2000s is when we adopted a couple of growth nickels, because the school board began growing faster, and the projections were all for continued growth, and we had a serious issue with our bond potential, so the board allocated or levied a couple of additional growth nickels, which resulted in additional state revenue, matching state revenue, and you see, you know, where we gradually crept up. You see the highlighted number there in the middle of that sheet. In 2008, we peaked in an average daily attendance of a little over 4,400 in 2008. And then you can see what's happened since then. It's been a relatively steady decline. We have one year from 2015 to 2016 where we gained about 15 students. We followed that with a year where we dropped to 85 students. This year, we don't know what actual end-of-year ADA is. We do know we were down about 150 students from the second school month last year, September, October of 2016 to September, October of 2017. Now, why that ADA is so critical is because it's a direct driver of state revenue. It's a direct driver of state revenue. If you look, the numbers there to the right, you'll see a history of SEEK revenue beginning in 2005. And you'll see the, if you go back up just a little bit, Carla, you'll see it began in 2005. This is right out of our MUNIS history. 2005, we generated 15,115,254 dollars in SEEK, and that was on an ADA of 4231.4. And you can see steady increases. You see it peaks in 2009 at 17.5 million, then you see a drastic drop. That's about the time that the economy crashed. Now, and obviously, there was a lot less state revenue to be distributed. Now, there was some federal revenue that rescued us to a certain degree. You may remember that there was some stimulus money that shored up the SEEK formula. That's long been gone. That lasted a couple of years. And you can see what's happened to SEEK since. If you just look at, say, 2013, let's just go back about five years. 2013, or 2012, we were at 15.7 million, 15.4 million, 15.1 million, went up 34,000. That was the, that was related to the year we gained 15 students, I believe. We dropped another, we went up the following year, then a drop, and then this past year, we saw a pretty significant drop of about a million, well, really significant drop, a million dollars. Now, I can tell you, and when I, when I project SEEK for next year, not the year we're in now, we know we're going to receive about 14 points, just under 14.2 million in SEEK this year. That's set in stone. Unless the state says, oh, we promised you that, our budget's not balanced, we need some of it back. Unless that happens, we'll get that, that allocation. Next year, the number you see at the very bottom right of that spreadsheet, if we don't gain students back, if we get into next school year and we have what I'm projecting to end this year without additional growth, you're looking at an estimate of an additional 1.3 million in loss revenue to the district, from 14.18 million to just under 13 million. Does that make sense to everybody? And it's all based on numbers of students in our schools.
And that is a projection predicated on SEEK staying the same for students.
Correct. If it drops, the number goes down.
Yeah.
And I'm sure, I don't, I don't think any of us are counting on an increase in the SEEK base. I don't think anyone's counting on that.
No, I thought of rhetoric coming out.
Keeping our fingers crossed that it doesn't drop. So, I guess I say that to prepare, our staff is working on cutting everything that's not nailed down as we speak, outside of that base staffing formula. Like I've shared with you at a recent board meeting, our plan is not to purchase school buses this year. We had some one-time expenditures, you're well aware of, that occurred this year, with a lot of challenges. We're going to get through this year. We're going to get through, I'm confident we're going to end this year with a reduced contingency. I'm confident today, best-case scenario, next year, we'll have a reduced contingency. What I want to make sure is we, we adjust for down the line, okay? That's really my goal here, is to plan for two, three years ahead, and we're not surprised. That's why I'm sharing with you in January of 2007, 2018, information I think you need to know for, you know, for future, future budgets, future decisions of all sorts. That's the most critical piece this district, that will affect our district's future finances, is our enrollment. And I think we need to do whatever we can to try to, try to increase that, obviously, and I know there's several ways to approach that, but again, we don't expect to change the staffing formula. We'll be working to put together a document for you to approve. It'll be a very, very much a draft when we give it to you on the night of January 16th. That's, we'll be putting that together without any knowledge of what the legislature's going to do to us. One thing I haven't mentioned yet, this presentation is a reminder, that we're projected to lose 1.3 million dollars in SEEK from this year to next year. Now, that's after we lost a little over a million from last year to this year, okay? In addition, you recall, our CERS match has increased from 19% per employee to 28% or so. That's about a half a million dollar expenditure increase that we get nothing for, other than a sound, hopefully, retirement system for our people. So we've got 1.3 million dollars less in revenue next year, we have a half a million dollars more in cost, and we're, both those, you know, with the exception of getting more students in, really out of our control. So challenging times ahead, you know, we're working to try to do the very best job we can, putting that budget together. We'll do that, have one for you on the night of 16th, and then we'll be working through the legislative session to come back to you in May with a little more informed budget at that time. Got any questions? Hate being the bearer of bad news, but, you know, sometimes, don't have a choice. Thank you very much.
I think, like you said, instead of all of a sudden it surprising us like it has many districts around the state, knowing now that we need to be looking at two or three years ahead is the right approach to take. So, thank you.
Okay, now, also, the last meeting I had in Frankfurt was, he has cut not the 17%, but the commissioner has cut the 7.24 or something, because he'd already told us that was about all he could, he could salvage.
And I haven't seen any official word as far as how those cuts affect us. I don't know if any of the other staff members, I haven't seen that. One of the things I just, I'm glad you said that, because, you know, as, as the state cuts CARA strands, for example, one of the things we talked about in the last couple of days is frisky programs. That's all staff, virtually all staff, so if they cut those budgets by 17% or 7%, we either have to reduce staff accordingly, or the general fund has to pick up that cost. And quite frankly, the general fund's really not in a position to cover, to make up ground for any of our grants at this point in time. So we're waiting to see, you know, on all those fronts, really. So it's interesting times. We'll be looking for that.
The commissioner already, he told us he had already submitted his cuts, and all he was doing was waiting.
He submitted them for the state buying a budget process. Got you, okay.
And he said all he was doing was waiting.
Well, back, back in September, whenever there was that 17. whatever percent cut that the governor requested of all state agencies, but a couple, I think K, the Department of Education's portion was around $69 million and change. KDE submitted to the governor's budget office in the low twenties, 22 million, give or take, something like that, if I remember correctly, which is a big difference, those two numbers. But one of the things that the commissioner said is he did not want to cut anywhere that would have a direct impact on the classroom. So that's, you know, things like, things that I'm familiar with, I'll say, are things like the internet connection cost, CATS offer cost, things like that that we know end up having direct impact at the classroom. The piece I think you were just talking about, that the governor announced, I think, Tuesday of this week, something like that, I believe, the percentage that he's now asking of state agencies for KDE equated to a little bit less than what the commissioner had submitted for that bigger budget cut request. So you could look at that as possibly being, well, if KDE said they found a way to cut the 22 million or so back in September, and now whatever this new percentage is, is a little bit less than that, maybe it's 20 million, I don't know that's the exact number, but let's just say it is, then you could possibly assume that whatever those proposed cuts back in September are the ones that would stick then for the remainder of this fiscal year going through June 30. So, again, I think that, like you were just saying, that's one of those things that we're having to wait to see then, if the governor's budget office will say, okay, KDE, you've met that obligation, the piece that I can require you to cut, so.
One other thing, you all know this, just to mention it again, unless you take extraordinary action, you know, you're obligated to give a step, a step increase, not a, not a cost of living, but step increase, and that's just, just under one and a half percent for your employees, and that's $300,000 line item in the budget. If, if you honor that, and we all, I don't remember a year where we didn't. So don't, we certainly hope we don't do that, or don't have to do something like that, but.
Something that would be helpful, Mr. Hawkinsmith, for the draft budget that had come later on this month, of course, the spreadsheet that you just showed us there gave us a projected idea of the dollars that we would see lost from SEEK. So having that as something that's, again, part of that document packet, I'll call it, to make it easy for us to see that, but then also some of these other things that have been mentioned, the CERS increase, you know, if there are some other expenses that, and I know you don't like using this phrase, but that we have to pay and we get nothing for in return, and by that, I think typically we mean it's not adding a teacher to the classroom, it's not buying new buses to replace aging ones, it's not buying new instructional materials for the classroom. If you can somehow, in that packet that you share with us, a, a, a loss in revenue section, a additional cost section, I think that can be something that can maybe help us also more easily.
They already have something more. I would say, just to mention that, I'll give you one other big information. We've been talking about this, it's been an ongoing conversation. One of our goals, and I don't think you always in the time of budget cuts, it doesn't mean you can never add anything. One of the things that's been a goal of ours is to try to begin a process of going to a one-to-one technology piece in the district. Not immediately, but a phased-in piece over a period of time. And we've had staff that have visited other districts that have successful programs, and it, sometimes when you make an investment like that, it allows you to be more efficient in other ways when it comes to technology and textbooks and things of that nature. So, you know, there are, we currently have a plan to initiate that next year. That may have to go on hold, but that's certainly something that we'll want to bring back to you later in the spring, possibility of that. And certainly, our hope is to be able to continue with that, unless things get to a point where it's just not, not possible. But our hope is to be able to continue with that. I think it's something we need to do, so. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkinsmith. Moving on to item five, Safe and Caring Environment. 5A is the annual nutrition report. Ms. Thompson?
I'm the Nutrition Director for Nelson County School System, and this is my first go-around for our local wellness policy for our school district. So I've compiled a couple of things. Nutrition and physical activity report card for this school year included in this. This will be uploaded on our website, is our school physical activity environment assessment information, statistics for our national school lunch program for the school year 16, 17, and also some data for 17 and 18. And then statistics for the school breakfast program, the after-school care program, the summer feeding program, and then also lunch menu nutrient analysis as well. So if you'll slide on through. And then the last one. Okay. So all schools are required to do a triennial assessment. They completed that this year. And the module topics within that included school health and safety policies and environment, health and education, physical education and other physical activity programs, nutrition services, health promotion for staff, family and community involvement, nutrition, and then physical activities. Of the modules that they, all schools completed, the two lowest module topics were health promotion for staff and family and community involvement. These two modules, these numbers here compare the total number of items in the action, in the action plan compared to the total number of items that could be in action. Suggested recommendations for these two areas, I just picked the two that were the lowest. Health promotion for staff, it was suggested, district funding for individualized fitness related to opportunities to support staff and students. And then family and community involvement suggestion was to allow parents and students' voice opinion at the district level on meals, menus being served during the day. With this assessment that all schools have done, the final rule took effect as of June 30th of this year, and as a part of that, we are to update the public by including the assessments for all the schools, a summary of the assessment for all the schools, and then our assessment that the state did on our local wellness policy, and all those things are ready to be uploaded.
The health promotion for staff, the recommendation, district funding for individualized fitness, et cetera. Is that implying funding for within the school day, or is that, could that be any time?
It could, it could be any time.
Okay.
You know, and even, you know, there, I have suggestions just from what I've done in the past. There are other programs in the county that are able to come in and do things like this for us free of charge. So there are those outlets that, especially after we just talked about the budget, are good options.
Do, what this made me think of, and I don't know the exact right terms, Ms. Bre, you may know a little bit better, I'm thinking of, like with health benefits.
That's exactly.
And FSA accounts, flexible spending accounts. I know my employer, I can get portions of my gym membership. Yes, I am going to a gym.
I saw people call it silver sneakers.
I'm not that idea. Even though I'm one of the, one of only two of here with the silver hairs.
So sometimes the medical insurance companies that, you know, they, they have incentives and incentive programs and things like that, that employees can, can choose to participate with, and maybe tying, you know, that into, you know, what you're doing.
Okay. And I think it's also educating the staff so that they know.
Yes.
So that they, when they fill out this assessment, it may just have been that they didn't realize that these were options.
Well, and that is something, I think, a lot of times, that people don't realize that maybe through some benefits, you're able to get a portion of, sometimes all, of a gym membership reimbursed for your year.
And also sometimes, and depending upon, you know, the company and what they provide, there's some, maybe some added services that the insurance company actually come in and do as part of being a provider. So that's something to investigate as well.
You do a health review, and then that bases, some of them now do a health review and base their, your insurance at your company, the needs of that, how high your premium will be.
I mean, I have signed off as a declaration as a non-smoker to get the lower premium.
Yes. So sometimes, yeah, they do it a lot now, and that way they know that you're either a smoker, a drinker, or a.
And that's where a lot of those incentive programs will, will come in. So if you do things like you do a biometric screening, and then you get an incentive for that, and you take those numbers, and you do the health risk assessment, and you, you know, you do those things, and then you get an incentive, or you can get dollars into your, you know, FSA or HSA, depending upon, you know, what the program is.
Well, and I know that with school districts participating within the statewide public sector health insurance program, I know state employees, the, I believe it was called the Humana Vitality Initiative. You are as well. Okay, and it, and it isn't just state employees, it's Humana.
It's part of the Humana.
Yeah, it's Humana, you know, specifically. Again, just throwing out these as ideas, because as, as we're trying to find ways, like we just heard from Mr. Hawkinsmith, that district funding, that first phrase in that recommendation is potentially something we might be very cautious about, trying to take advantage of things that are already there, already paid for, already free, if we want to call it, for our employees, for our state.
And then there's also internal challenges, too. So, you know, you can, you know, maybe spearhead some internal challenge projects that are directed towards, you know, health and wellness, you know, by, you know, steps challenges, or, you know, having a, you know, I know that the, the school system, they do a couple of 5Ks and things like that throughout the year, and, you know, providing opportunities for, you know, the staff and, you know, to be able to participate with that. There's, there's like all kinds of things.
Well, and we've got, and we've got such a great partnership with court, with our athletic trainers, that court may have some opportunities to feed into this.
And they do have some programs, yeah, they do.
So it's, I think it's just a matter of trying to get the right people together to have conversations.
Resourceing, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Moving on to item 5B, the Lincoln Trail District Health Department contract. Mr. Lethers?
Good evening, everybody. You don't need to do anything tonight, just sort of presenting the concept to you. By our next board meeting, which will be a work with session, I hope to bring to you the Lincoln Trail District Health Department contract. I'm hoping to have that early next week, be able to run it through our, our legal counsel, also prepare it with some other plans that are in place, make any modifications, and then bring it to you for approval. So I'm just giving you a heads up that hopefully we have that in place by next meeting.
Sounds good. And this is the partnership that will be able to handle the billing for Meda.
Yes, it's basically, it's a contract that allows us, Nelson County Schools, to bill, Medicaid, under their accreditation. We can't do it without their accreditation. So the contract basically outlines certain things, parameters that we'll have to do, training that the nurses will have to go through in order to operate in their system and to not lose their accreditation.
And this, and this is the one that was tied in, I think, with, back early on in the school year, being able to put nurses, our goal of putting nurses in every school building, but then the potential, not that we know it for a fact, but the potential that this could help offset that cost by this reimbursement of the billing.
That's our, that's our intentions, is to offset as much as possible, whether it's 20% or 100% of costs.
Right. Whatever it is, it's something.
That's correct.
And we have to have these nurses in these schools.
The nurses were important. I tried to reemphasize when we talked about that, the approval of nurses was trying to do what was right for the services of our students.
They're at work, and they're working, and things are going relatively well. I think there, we still have some trainings to do, and especially because when we get into the billing, we have, you know, Lincoln Trail has certain stipulations that we're going to use their, you know, their process, that we. going to use their, you know, their process that we have to fulfill. So we're in the process of doing that, but it's working well. I think it's going to be very successful for the district long-term.
Good. I'm one that I just didn't see how we got by, well, we got by. Between health issues out there for these kids, and we didn't get by.
The nurses will remain employees of our district, they're under our control, but they have to operate under certain parameters when they do the billing. Again, so Lincoln Trail's accreditation is not compromised.
Good.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Ms. Leathers, appreciate it. Moving on to section six, student and shareholder engagement. Six A is a, looking at a revised 2018 board meeting schedule. Ms. Brown?
We have emailed you all, we had an incorrect date because of some things on the la, on the one from last month, and we simply have sent you several different options to look at, and basically, this is at your all's pleasure. You all decide when, what, where you want these, these meetings, and we'll take, take care of it from there. So basically, you know, you all know what, where I stand on all this, but it's not, it's not really what I want, or not want. It's, you all are the board, and you all need to, to establish these as you, as you see fit.
So, I know that the one change on this one was the May work session date there, sliding it by one week. I mean, I'll still, while we're looking at revisiting the school board meeting dates, I'll still throw out there that, the, the one concern I have is that lack of consistency of a work session and a regular session each month that's already identified, already scheduled. I think at our last meeting, whenever we voted on the version that we're looking at correcting now, my concerns were that making sure that we, we had the opportunity for a lot of discussion like we are during this work session, and then also during, giving an opportunity for staff to go back, address any concerns that we had, find out answers we might need before we actually have our vote, voting regular session in the later part of each month. Since then, something else has, has kind of popped up to me because I've had a few people that have contacted me asking when today's meeting was, some people out in the community, and I'll throw out, I, I would question whether or not having some months with two meetings, some months with one meetings, will it cause confusion for people in the community? Or will they much more rather have first Thursday, with a couple of exceptions, we know, because of fall break, spring break. I think July fifth is the first Thursday of July, and to me, that's a bad day to have a work session on because of holidays. But having consistently a work session and a regular meeting each month will make it easier for the public to get into that rhythm as well, for those that want to attend meetings.
The only thing I thought of was, I don't have a problem up to when we, when we put our new superintendent up, and I want to know what, I'm me, and I want to know what's going on. I want transparency, I want a work session when we name our new superintendent. I just want to know what's, how things are progressing and the stages that, that he, she, I just feel better.
And you say that there is in August and September and November, there are two. There's not, there's not in July because of that odd date that Mr. Jackie talked about, and there's not in October because of fall break. And so, but it's still, this is your all's, this is your all's schedule, and if this is the way you want.
I think, you know, historically, the April, the July, and the October dates have typically been slid both dates by one week.
Yes.
Because the first week of April has historically been spring break, the first week of October historically fall break, obviously, the first week of July is the fourth of July, which typically ends up being a three or four day holiday that occurs in there. And so, all three of those months in the past, we've usually slid by one week the work session as well as one week the regular session. Just like we have, just like in November, we typically have to slide things a little bit earlier because the third Tuesday of the month, a lot of times ends up being the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week. I mean, I, you know, we, again, my concern being, we add more special call meetings, it, it does raise the question of, why did we not already have the meetings? Why is it that we're needing to call them? And we are limited then on the agenda to exactly what's on that agenda. If the meetings are already set, we have the flexibility of the agenda, being able to be modified even up until the last moment if needed. But also then, we have that ability, I think like what you were saying there, Ms. Berry, that it's very transparent, that twice a month, there's a work session where a lot of discussion occurs, there's a regular session where there's even some more discussion, but usually not quite as much as like what we have at a, at a working session, and then also the voting. I know I kind of put Mr. Brooks on the spot last month, and I think his comment was is that the two meetings a month provide for a lot, he sees a lot of open discussion at the Nelson County Board meetings because of those two meetings a month. And I think that goes in with the transparency piece you're talking about.
So, with regard to, you know, you say, you know, the public, and, you know, given the public, you know, for the work session, the opportunity to be here, I'm just going to come right out and say it. I mean, this is the most I have ever seen at a work session since I've been on the board, and this is what I'm rolling into year four. I get it with the, with the, with the, with the regular sessions, but with the work sessions, nobody shows up. Nobody's here. We get the occasional staff, we get the occasional principal, but nobody's here.
So tonight, we came and we sat here for Mr. Leathers to tell us what he's going to tell us in three weeks.
Yeah.
And in three weeks, we're going to hear the same thing again. So if we think that our public needs to hear things twice a month, fair enough. I think they're smart enough to hear it once. I don't think people need to be told the same thing over and over. That was my opinion last time we discussed it, it still is.
I think, I think the way it's set up, I'm okay with this. If I felt like, or if I saw that the public was here, every work session, and it was packed, and we had, then yeah, I get it. I mean, I would be totally in favor and say, yeah, we need to do that because, but they're not here. You know?
I'd, I'd say that based upon that, they're going to start showing us.
I hope, good, good, good. Yes.
When I look at the schedule, I find it a little incredible that, you know, we've, I've been to meetings now for months and months. The biggest decision that you all are about to make is going to be made in April, and there's one meeting in February, one meeting in March, and one meeting in April. I find that incredible, and it, it appears to me to be even sneaky, or like, you don't want, I mean, people may not come, but they need to have the opportunity to come, they need to have an opportunity to come, and hear what you guys are talking about or thinking about with regard to the superintendent, and other stuff too, not just the superintendent, but other things. It just looks very odd on that calendar when you know that April seventeenth meeting is when you're choosing our, our next leader, and there, there's one meeting in those three months. It just feels odd.
So, okay, so with regard to the superintendent search process, if we have to have a special call meeting because of something that's progressing with that, we have the option to do that, right?
Sure.
Okay, so basically, if you were to set that part of it aside, and, and not let that part be a factor with this working session and with the regular sessions, that would, I mean, that shouldn't be a factor. This has to do with regular district business, and that the superintendent's search process would be like a small part of it.
Yeah, I look at the superintendent's search process as being separate. It's, it's a job interview. We're interviewing tons of people for a job. It's not going to be totally public. It, it's just not going to be by the nature of the business of what it is. So, I mean, there will be interviews that aren't going to be recorded and put on TV. I mean, some of them will be, I'm sure, but not all of them.
The, well, the, the actual interviews typically are held in executive session.
Right.
The discussions, though, are in open session, and, and I agree, there, there will be some special call meetings that have to be called, as part of this.
Just for that.
You know, it's, you know, it's different opinions on it. We do have to make a decision on this one tonight. So we can either look at this schedule, that's the one up here right now, that is essentially the, the same as what was voted on last month, with the one change of being the May working session moved from the first to the eighth. I believe it was the first originally, correct? Probably, fourth, okay. Any, oh, I'm sorry, it is, because that's a Tuesday instead of a Thursday in May. So again, you're, you're right there, Carla. Or we can look at having the work session, regular sessions, that's two a month with those minor moves in the months of the holiday of July, and the spring break, and the fall break, and of course, obviously, the Thanksgiving time. It's going to be one way or the other. I know that we've got a new superintendent that will be coming on board. There's the potential that they will also have a differing opinion of how they would like to work with us. I know that I particularly want to spend as much time with the new superintendent as possible in work sessions and regular sessions. We just need to make a decision so that we can move on on this item.
Okay. The only thing I'm asking for is when we get a superintendent. Now, the other, and let me guarantee, let me assure you, all of our visitors, there is nothing sneaky about it, really it's not, because the search committee, our committee, is there solely to, to minimize and to make a recommendation to the board. And as we've done before, the board, you don't talk about this kind of stuff except in executive sessions. So that, that's the law, that we can't change that. That's just the way the law works, that's the cover. I would like to see one added in October, and the rest of it, to me, is fine. That's just me.
You want to add one October?
I want to add one in October.
Which?
A working session in October.
I would think then what we would need to do is have it, the working session, the second week, second Thursday of October, which most likely means the October regular session may need to be slid as well, because I think that would put them back to back.
That's generally what we do.
So I think that would then be Thursday, October eleventh, as the working session at five PM here at Central Office. And then Tuesday, October twenty-third, the regular session, or decision, decision session as it's mentioned in this, at five PM at the Central Office.
And like I said, the only reason why I like it is we get a new superintendent, and I want to see what he's doing. I do want to see what he's doing, but you know what I mean.
If, if.
I want to make sure everything is where, and the public knows what's going on, and our media can report exactly what's going on.
If, if that's the case, since they'll be starting July first, we also then want to have a work session in July with them to start off.
I think that might be a little rough. I mean, I, the person's going to have to get their feet on the ground and get everything, you know, I, I wouldn't, no, I'm not concerned about July like I would be the later one. Yeah, they need time to breathe, and, you know, time to, for help, to get to know us or get to know the community and that, and that kind of thing. I don't have a problem with that.
So then, would, would your motion then be, what we see up here with the one change of in the month of October, having the work session on Thursday, the eleventh, at five PM here at Central Office?
Yes.
And having the decision session, as it's labeled on here, Tuesday, October twenty-third at five PM at Central Office.
Yes, sir, that'll be it.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so a motion by Ms. Berry?
I'm okay with that, I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Berry? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? So it's three to one, pass. Let's see, moving on then to six B, the superintendent's search process. And while this lists it as the board chair, I'll, I'd like to ask, so Ms. Bree, would, would you mind, since you started the process and that relationship with Mr. Salyer, would you mind continuing that?
Absolutely.
As part of this, I mean, up until the point that, I'll call it, any of the legal requirements that a board chair has to do.
Like the signatures, things like that.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, as far as any update on the superintendent's search process?
I have nothing new to report at this point.
The, the one thing would be, I know that, was it yesterday, the job was posted?
Yeah, posted.
You're having the meeting the nineteenth of, of December.
Oh, that was the training. Yeah, we did, yeah.
Well, and that, the December nineteenth meeting that we had here, and I think all but one of the search committee representatives were here, focused in on what are those qualities based off of the survey results, the community forum result, and that's what led to that job description creation that Mr. Salyer spearheaded for us and posted on yesterday, or day before, whichever day it was.
And I think it, I mean, I really liked it.
So.
Get everything.
I think, I mean, he, he shared with us, it is posted off of the KASA site.
It is.
There is a redirect from the Nelson County Schools District website. I haven't checked myself, but I know there is the, I think it's called KEPS, K-E-P-S, don't ask me what it stands for, that is on the Kentucky Department of Education's website, that lists all education jobs in all school districts. According to Mr. Salyer, it was also, it has to be posted on that, so according to him, it's also been done there. So that's three places that it's out there already.
And he's also indicated that the national, when he goes to nationals, it will be available.
So it's out there.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bree, I appreciate you continuing on that relationship with Owens as well.
Absolutely.
Item six C, superintendent update, Ms. Brown?
Yes, there are just a few things of, that have been going on that, just to fill you in, all these are FYI type things. During, during the break, we did the final inside work at Coxus Creek Elementary and cleaning the plenum, and my favorite new word, and it's really good, and they've done a really good job, and glad, and we still have some outside things to do, some, but we're going to have to wait for the weather to get a little better on that. We have new guttering, and we've got some drainage things that we need to work on, some improvements on the stucco, make sure we're not getting seepage in that area. But the inside has all been completed, and it's been a vast improvement. I think it's really going to work out well for us. I want to thank Mr. Hawkinsmith, and Ms. Brown, and Ms. Williams, and Ms. Clark for what they've, they've already started a very intensive process of meeting with principals and different things, looking at our budget and our restrictions that we're going to have, and meeting with them about possible cuts and where we can save some money, not only in the short term, but looking at things long-term also. And this is not an easy thing for them to do. Nobody likes to cut things, but with the financial restrictions that we're going to be having over the next few years, these are just the inevitable things that we have to look at. The new board member, I talked to Mr. John Thompson, that's the gentleman who the commissioner has designated to be in charge of this process for us. The, it's been up for several weeks, the ability to apply. As of today at noon, there were two formal applications for the position in District One. He's going to wait a few more days. He will set up his interviews for everyone that has applied later this month, later in January. And he will do the interviews, make a recommendation to the commissioner, and the commissioner will appoint the next board member. Now, I just want to remind everybody, this process is probably not going to be as fast as we would like it to be because of the session, the legislative session going on, the commissioner's very busy. But they assured me that they would have this process done for a board member to be sworn in in February, so they can be in the process with, with the selection committee and the board, and looking at the process of hiring the new superintendent. So I fully anticipate, Mr. Thompson's very aware of our timeframes, and he will get this done. So we will have our fifth board member from the New Haven District One area by, no later than the board session in February. than the board session in February.
Great.
Okay, the next thing is, I do have some really good news and stuff. As of this afternoon, Mr. Leather's reported to me that our total number of enrollees are, is up, 24 students from last semester. Now, we lost a few, but we gained some, gained several, so we're a total of about 24 students to the good for this semester, so that's a good thing for that. The new hires, we have some new hires that I want to announce. Ms. Kate Regis will be a teacher at Nelson County High School. Lexus Perry, a teacher at Bloomfield Elementary. Lydia Rakes, a teacher at New Haven. Arvin Lampkin, a mechanic with the Transportation Department. And Renee Shannon, a teacher at Nelson County High School. We have some resignations to announce. Kim Miller, a teacher at Nelson County High School. Gary Doames, a driver, a bus driver in transportation. Emily Kelly, a teacher at Coxus Creek Elementary. Mallory Proctor, a teacher at New Haven. And Anthony Orr, a director with the district. So those positions have, those people have resigned. I will be available after the board, after the meeting's adjourned, if any of the press want to have any questions on those things. The other thing is that I passed out a board policy to you all. We've had a resignation as a softball coach at Nelson County High School, and we're scrambling in just a matter of a few weeks, where they're supposed to be starting, February the 15th. So there's a possibility that I might ask you all for a waiver in allowing someone that's, for a year, to coach them, if that's not full, but I wanted to give you the policy, and if you all look at the last thing, and I'll read it, says, "District administrators and principals, assistant principals shall not serve as head or assistant coaches or sponsors of extracurricular activities, including seventh grade or higher, enter the scholastic athletic teams." I may be asking for a waiver simply for this year to get this team covered, and if we can do it another way, we will, but there's a possibility I may have to ask for that waiver. It's been done, there is precedent in the past where that waiver was, or a yearly thing has been done. Okay, that's, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown. Item 6D, guest comments. Guest comment policy, any person wishing to address the board may do so by following these rules. Individuals representing themselves are limited to three minutes. Individuals representing a group are limited to five minutes. Please step up the microphone, state your name and address, and if you represent a group, state the name of the group you are representing.
Ms. Boblet, 832 Tom Ru-Ru. I'm not group, I'm just here. I wanted to do, I wanted to address you all, to do a better job of expressing myself than I did at the forum the other night. And I would have done that at the special meeting, but I went online, and it said it was at 3:00, and I thought I'd missed it. So I messed that up. I was excited to hear that the board had reached out to the community and asked for the qualities that we were looking for in the new superintendent. I was so excited, in fact, that I invited several politicians in town, a lot of business people, everybody I could think of. I wanted all the input that they could provide. I am passionate about Nelson County School System. It's been a part of my life for 50 of my 62 years. Excuse me, I'm passionate. I started out at Omtake Elementary School, graduated from the high school, got back involved when my children started at Foster Heights. I volunteered for 18-plus years, sat on a lot of these committees, and a lot of these meetings have been involved. I love the system. At the forum, I didn't know what to expect, and I tried to voice my concerns, but after having heard a lot of feedback, I feel that my message was lost. I apologize for not communicating it clearly. I was not pointing a finger at anybody, or trying to single anyone out. I hear concerns in my business, as a realtor, about our school system. I hear it from people in the community, I hear it from people that I work with. It is a concern. There is a perception about the system that needs to be changed. There are statistics and performance numbers that need to be improved, and I think we have to acknowledge that we need to make improvements before we can hope to make improvement. As members of the board, I hope that you will listen to these concerns and even complaints without prejudice. It's very important that we have a strong board, more now than ever. We need, we need leadership. I believe with all my heart that the hiring of this superintendent is the most important hire that will be made in Nelson County, in industry, in business, or anything else, not only for the next four years, but for years to come. We need a strong superintendent with strong leadership qualities to guide and support our teachers and our principals. We need someone who has the vision and passion to implement innovative ways to reach our students. We need to hire someone who will embrace the new technology, who will reach out to the community and the businesses to have help to prepare our students in the future. We need someone that we can trust, but the most important thing that we have in Nelson County, and that's our children. Thank you.
End for command.
Any other comments? You just put the camera on yourself, didn't you?
Jim Brooks, 7099 Wolver Road, that's what it's called this week, so we'll see if it changes. I just wanted to, again, express my opinion on the, I mourn the loss of the working sessions. Now, I'm a journalist, and I'm kind of a meeting geek anyway, because I don't mind coming to meetings. Now, I know I have complained on social media about the hard seats, and the length of the meetings, and the lack of caffeinated beverages, but the discussions you all have make me a better journalist, because I can better understand what's going on. And I think my comrades can agree with that. And I, and I know that, you know, you can have special meetings if you, if you need to, but special meetings are very restricted to the agenda. The open discussions that these working sessions have, it's been wonderful to attend as a journalist, because you get some insight into the decision-making. And I know that it's not your all's job to make me a better journalist, but it helps me communicate what you guys are doing to the community. And that's, that's part of the value of me, and then also to the people that come. If they come to a working session, and they've got something they would like to talk about, well, discussion's restricted to the agenda. And if what they want to talk about isn't on the agenda, I don't know if you can relax the rules to allow public input on things that aren't on the agenda, and if you do, I'm not sure the board can comment.
You're talking about if it's a special call meeting?
Yeah, special meeting. So those restrictions, and I have seen other bodies have to restrict public comment, you know, just because it's a special meeting. My thought was to have the meetings, and then cancel, cancel the work sessions. You all have had some very short working sessions, and so, you know, my thoughts was to cancel the ones that you really don't need. But we've already, I know you weren't meaning to, but you've created perception among some of our people in the audience, that you're reducing opportunities for public input. And that's not fair, because I know what you guys want to do. You want to have meaningful meetings, and not just hear the same thing, you know, on a Thursday, and then a week and a half later. I get that. Anyway, if there's an opportunity to reconsider, I appreciate Mr. Jackie's vote, but I think it, I think there's the perception still that the board is pulling back opportunity for public input. And I know that's not the truth, but perception is reality. You know, I mean, that's not my perception, but anyway, just my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other guest comments? Okay, need a motion then to adjourn this working session?
Motion?
Motion by Ms. Berry?
Second.
Second by Ms. Dye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. There is no executive session or closed session.